To order, please. Madam Secretary, would you call roll, please?
Mayor Gillespie.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Chairman Gardner.
Here.
Vice Chairman McGauley.
Here.
Chief Johnson. Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
And Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let it be known that we do have a quorum. I see that we have no minutes, our old business. Starting to our new business, we have a final plat of Oak Bunnivista, plat number three, located at Windmill Way. Owner is the Oak of Bunnivista L.L.C. Engineer Larry Speaks and Associates. Mr. Nelson, would you read that resolution for us, please? Yes, please.
Resolution, final plat, the Oaks of Bunnivista, number 3A, July the 19th, 2012. Whereas the Oaks of Bunnivista L.L.C. is the owner of the Oaks of Bunnivista plat 3A, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits of County Road 4, and whereas the sketch plan for the proposed development was approved January the 5th, 2006. Preliminary plat for the proposed development was approved July 22, 2010. The preliminary plat for the proposed development was approved on March 15th, 2012, and whereas the required city departments have reviewed and commented on the proposed final plat and determined to be in substantial complete. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the final plat of the Oaks of Bunnivista plat number 3A. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Speaks? Come up. Mr. Speaks?
Thank you. I'm Greg Gillen, by the way.
Mr. Greg?
And again, we're seeking final plat approval of these lots here in this location. We have a few items on the punch list. Grassing and seeding is being completed today. The sidewalk was completed about two or three days ago. The asphalt turnaround has been installed. We had one pipe to extend and put an open throat inlet up there at the north end of the temporary turnaround. It's been completed as of yesterday. So, we've got a few small items to take care of, and any punch list issues that Mr. Stewart and Mr. Anderson come up with, but we're basically complete.
Any question of Mr. Gillen?
The Commissions.
Mr. Duke, your report, please.
Yes, sir. Agree with Mr. Gillen that they are substantially complete with this first final plat of the preliminary plat of, excuse me, number three that was approved back in March. There were 27 lots approved in that preliminary plat. There are just 17 in this final plat. That is completely within your regulations. They can get that completed in several final plats if they wish. And the improvements that are required are, as I stated, are substantially complete. So, we recommend approval.
Any question of Mr. Duke from the Commission? Thank you, Mr. Duke. Y'all heard the resolution. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. And Secretary, motion passed.
One more member.
Let the record show that Mr. Smith, other Commission, have shown up as present. Thank you. The next order of buildings is preliminary plat for Bass plat number 1A, located off Red Eagle Road of Northerton Road. Owner is George H. and Barbara E. Bass. Engineer is Jarvis and Associates. And this is a public hearing. In the public hearing, where everyone come up and sign. If you could come up and sign, please. If you haven't signed in, please come up and sign in with the Secretary. Thank you. Please state your name and...
Good afternoon. I'm George Bass. The owner of the property. I'm seeking final approval of plat 1A for four lots, parcels A, B, C, and D. Larry Jarvis asked me to come in his place. After he told me what he charged, I decided to come. I believe everything is ready and in order. And in your behalf, any questions about this? I'd be glad to try to answer your questions.
And the Commission, have any questions, Ms. Bass? Thank you, Ms. Bass.
Thank you.
Is it anyone else like to speak for or against? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Mayor, would you read the resolution, please? For Bass subdivision plat 1A.
Yes, sir. Whereas George H. and Barbara E. Bass are the owners of Bass subdivision plat 1, whereas the proposed development is located inside the Prattville city limits at Red Eagle Road and Northerton Road, and whereas the sketch plan for the proposed development was approved June 21st, 2012. Public hearing for the proposed development was heard on July 19th, 2012, whereas required city departments have reviewed and commented on the proposed development. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted preliminary plat of Bass subdivision plat 1A. Mr. President, I so move.
Thank you, Mayor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Thank you. Second? All right. Is it anyone like to, I mean, Mr. Duke, would you like to come up and speak, give your presentation, please?
Yes, just for clarification's sake, especially for the folks that might tune into this on the web, excuse me, you're being presented with 4.5 acres divided into basically three lots, excuse me, into four lots. The first one was done as a one lot sell-off and is not included with this. The other three are a part of this plat. All three of them have frontage on Red Eagle Road. No utility improvements are required, and that's why you're being presented both with preliminary and final in this meeting. Recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Any question for Mr. Duke? Mayor?
I do, and it's not specifically about these lots, but Mr. Bass came to me and asked for a letter that showing that they, as soon as houses were built on here, that they would receive garbage pickup. And I actually had a printoff of our ordinance that showed about the garbage pickup is, as soon as these are developed, then they will be receiving garbage pickup, correctly?
Yes, sir. They're, the property is already in the city limits, so there's no annexation question.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
They would receive pickup just like any other residents in the city.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Anyone else have any more question, Mr. Duke? Thank you, Mr. Duke. All right, we've heard the resolution. All in favor, let me know by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign? Thank you. The next order of buildings is the final plat, Bass plat number 1A, located off Red Eagle Road, Northerton Road. Owner is George H. and Barbara E. Bass. Larry Jarvis and Associates represent. Any more questions of the final plat? Mr. Duke, you have anything to say about? Thank you. All in, whoever need to read that resolution. Mr. Smith, would you read the resolution?
Resolution, final plat, Bass subdivision plat 1A, July 19th, 2012. Whereas George H. and Barbara E. Bass are the owners of Bass subdivision plat 1, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the Prattville city limits at Red Eagle Road and Northerton Road, and whereas the sketch plan for the proposed development was approved June 21st, 2012, and the preliminary plat for the proposed development was approved July 19th, 2012, and whereas the required city departments have reviewed and commented on the proposed development, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted final plat of Bass subdivision plat 1A. So read and approve.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Madam Mayor. Any comments from the Commission? Thank you. Mr. Duke, no comments here. Thank you. All in favor of this resolution, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed? Thank you. Motion carried again. Unlike miscellaneous, we have a preliminary plat revised Glenbrook subdivision phase two, located off of Old Ridge Road. Owner Larry and Diane Avant. And this is a public hearing. For anyone that's want to speak, please come up and sign in. For or against?
Thank you, all of our experienced staff. I'm Bill Barrett with Barrett Simpson with Engineering and Surveyors on Park. This is the preliminary plat that you had previously approved of Glenbrook subdivision. That plat incorporated a number of 40-foot wide zero-lot lot lots right through this block here. What we're asking for is you to reconsider, and we'd like to change those lots in large to 65-foot wide lots, more of a conventional home site lot, consistent with the lots in the front phase up close to the Ridge Road. That's, that's essence of what we're asking for. Everything else remains the same, just those few lots made orange.
All right, thank you, sir. Do we have any question? Thank you, sir. Mr. Duke, you have any comments?
No, sir. Just to discuss procedure with you, this is, requires a actual public hearing because you're modifying more than 10 lots in a pre-preliminary plat. So, I'm not sure if you opened the public hearing, maybe I missed the...
Yes, we opened it.
Sorry.
Matter of fact, you're in it.
I apologize. I was looking down at my notes and might have missed that, so.
Okay.
Basically, the city has no objection to this. It is consistent with zoning. The zoning is an R5. This expansion to 65-foot wide is certainly within that required minimum zoning. It's far greater than the minimum zoning, so.
All right. Any Commission have any question of Mr. Duke? Not, thank you.
I do, and this is a zoning-related question. Typically, these lots would be R3s, wouldn't they? As 65 feet, make them R3s?
Correct. They would be R3s. At R5, they are required to have no more than a 20-foot setback.
Right.
At an R3, they would be required to have a 25-foot setback. But you can, you can be far greater than the required zoning. You just can't be under that.
Is there any pitfall down the road for not resoning this as to what it's really going to be?
I would say no, mainly because the Commission, City Council, saw it to be acceptable to have 40-foot wide lots in this location and did not see any detriment to that. So, if you're looking at compatibility with adjacent properties, y'all have made a decision in an earlier date that that was well-suited to be R5 if you wanted to.
I'm not concerned about that. I'm concerned about somebody somewhere along the way coming down and buying four lots and making six out of it. Because it's zoned where you could do that.
Well, that would require another replat by this body. And you would get another...
That's antipathy.
You would get another chance to touch that.
That's antipathy.
Right.
All right. Any more questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. We're closed the public hearing. Mr. McGauley, if you will, would you read that resolution under Glenbrook?
Preliminary plat revised Glenbrook subdivision phase two, July 19, 2012. Whereas Stone Martin Builders is developer of Glenbrook subdivision phase two, and whereas the proposed development is located off of Old Ridge Road on the north side of River Chase North subdivision, south of Pendlebrook subdivision, west of Glenbrook subdivision phase one, and whereas, one, the proposed development is outside the city limits; two, the sketch plan was approved on November 1, 2011 with contingencies; three, the preliminary plat for Glenbrook subdivision phase two was approved on February 15th, 2012; four, a public hearing was held on July 19th, 2012 on the proposed revised preliminary plat, and whereas the required city departments have reviewed and commented on the proposed revised preliminary plat, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted revised preliminary plat of Glenbrook subdivision phase two. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any more questions of the Commission, of Mr. Duke, of Mr. Barrett? No question? Call for the questions. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign? Thank you. Mr. Carey. The next item on our agenda is the preliminary plat, the overlooked estate plat number 5A. Mr. Hall, would you read that resolution, please?
This is to withdraw Commission approval of the overlooked estates plat number 5A, July 19th, 2012. Whereas Kenneth A. Chambliss requested Prattville Planning Commission approval of the plat known as overlooked estates plat number 5A, which included lots 19 of the overlooked estates. Plat number five is recorded in the Ettaug County plat book two, page 333, and property removed from...
Mr. Hall?
Yeah.
Read the resolution.
I thought that's what I was doing.
Yeah, that's what we got. That's what we got.
That's all, that's all we got.
Yeah, that's what we got. I don't know what you got, too.
Number five.
The number five?
That's all I got.
Yeah.
She cheated you, sir. But he's in, he's reading right back.
Mr. Hall, would you please start that resolution over again?
Okay. Whereas Kenneth A. Chambliss requested Prattville Planning Commission approval of all, all the plat known as overlooked estates plat number 5A, which included lot 19 of the overlooked estates. Plat number five is recorded in the Ettaug County plat book two, page 233, and property removed from, removed by from lots 13, 14, 15 of the overlooked estates plat number eight by a replat recorded in Ettaug County plat book three, page two, eight, page two, and whereas Mr. Chambliss certified by his signature on overlooked estate plat number 5A, his ownership of the property contained in the submitted replat. Whereas the Commission found the submitted replat complied with the Commission adopted subdivision regulation and city of Prattville zoning ordinance and approved by the plat as presented. And whereas the Commission has since been presenting information indicating that Mr. Chambliss did not have clear title to that portion of the approved replat originally contained in the replat of lots 13, 14, 15 of the overlooked estate plat number eight are recorded in the Ettaug County plat book three, page two. Now therefore be it resolved by the Prattville Planning Commission that the March 15th, 2012 approval of overlooked subdivision plat 5A recorded in plat book 2012, page five of the Office of the Judiciary Probate County is hereby withdrawn. Be it further resolved that the Commission's secretary is instructed to record a copy of this resolution in the Office of the Judiciary Probate of Ettaug County. Mr. Chairman, I strongly move we adopt this resolution.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Nelson. Is it anyone here? Mr. Chambliss, is he here? Mr. Duke, would you bring us up to speed then? What's going on?
The requested change was requested by staff, not by Mr. Chambliss.
Okay.
If it's all right, Mr. Chair, I need to give some background. I know that you each had a chance to read the memo that was sent out in your packet. And let me also, first of all, start out by saying I don't think there was any attempt here to present something to the Commission that, present something falsely. I think it's a matter of not having a clear title to the property and there being some failure to transfer before Mr. Chambliss got it. What we're trying to do, though, is make sure that there's clear record at the probate office that the plat that you approved back in March is basically, from our standpoint, not valid. And this is the only way to do it. We cannot un-record something that somebody else owns and has presented for recording. This is the only way to kind of place some kind of a notice on the title that the replat was not valid. Now, just for clarification, we're seeing green, outline green is lot 19. The original plat five overlooked states, we have 13, 14, and 15 of plat eight, the overlooked estates. And then shortly after this plat was filed, number eight, they came back and replatted and shortened up these lots and took out this piece here. Now ideally, this is, I'm sorry if I messed the dates up, somewhere around the early 70s. Ideally, what you would have done at that point is plat that piece of property back into something else, okay? We would not today allow that to just sit out there. You can't unplat pieces of platted property without putting it back in some other place. Now, this was quit claimed by the developer of overlooked estates to the owner of lot 19. Formerly joined up by a replat to lot 19. Lot 19 was transferred several times, I believe, two or three times after that until it ended up with Mr. Chambliss. And I feel it's likely that the owners of lot 19 thought they were transferring all pieces of property, but the reference in the deeds is only to lot 19. It did not refer to these pieces of replatted property. What Mr. Chambliss discovered is that he did not own this piece, but then he had it deeded to him by the person who was identified to him actually owned the property, and that was the original developer of overlooked, which turned out, of course, to be incorrect. But he presented to my department, presented to you, that he had deeds to both this piece and this piece of property. And that was why the replat was presented to you and approved. Once building started on these lots that Mr. Chambliss had created, neighbors were quick to provide us with information that they thought that that piece was still outstanding. And little deeper research into that showed that that piece was still owned by the original owners of lot 19, and I think that's been possibly deeded to some of the neighbors at this point. What that did in effect, though, is cause this lot not to be buildable under, or these two lots, or even lot 19 for that matter, to be unbuiltable under current zoning. It's not sufficient setback for most houses that would be built in an R2 district, so. I feel certain that at some point this will have to be resolved in some way to make lot 19 buildable. It will probably be back before you. But at this point, I'm asking you to approve the resolution that's been presented and so that that can be recorded and essentially withdraw your approval for the replat known as 5A. I'd be glad to answer your question. I know there's a lot of information and may have lost it at some point.
This is R2 zoning, right?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. I understand it's done in a slab pole?
Yes, sir. There was a permit issued based on the platted property, and that was... Keep in mind, this is planted lot here.
Right.
Planted lot here, which provides sufficient depth, given the building plan that was presented to meet zoning. That, work on that was stopped once information was provided to our office, and work has not continued since. We, we will take action to cancel that building permit. We've just not done that. It's not a major issue at this point, as long as work doesn't continue.
So we'd hate to be built with one house whenever it gets cleared, right?
If it's going to be divided into two lots, it'll have to be done by another plat. That will have to come back before you. At this point, at this point, it basically exists... The property exists in this fashion. It exists as lot 19, then these abbreviated pieces of 13, 14, and 15, and then this little sliver that is still technically out there in no mix. What we would like to see from the planning department's perspective is that little sliver find a home with somebody, okay? Whether it's planted back into 13, 14, and 15 where it was taken out, or it's planted back into 19 in some fashion. We need to clean, it needs to be cleaned up. And this is a really good example of why you have good subdivision records. And it's the ease at which property is transferred when you have good subdivision recording. Otherwise, you end up with meets and bounds descriptions like this piece here. And you also end up with a situation where... I feel certain the owners of this property, even though they got that as a quit claim, they thought when they were transferring it, it was being done properly. I don't think there was any malice or any attempt to falsify anything. It's just a matter of it not being picked up. And I would also say this is a good example of why you have good title research done before you transfer property. It's apparent that there was not much in the way of title work done by any of those transfers. In fact, it says it clearly on the deeds that they were done without title.
This was really surprising to me. This is the first I ever remembered on this commission. I've been on this thing about 22 years now.
Mr. Nelson, I have to agree with you. I've never seen this.
I've never seen it.
And the reason is, the burden is on the person actually replating the property. It does Mr. Chambliss no good to create something he can't clearly transfer later on. As a builder, he's hoping to transfer that, and somebody is hoping to write a title policy on that in most cases, especially with a mortgage. And so, he would not have been able to do that. He's probably better off at this point that it was discovered now instead of after a house was completed, so.
I think you said 19A or 19B, or both of them with the original lot lines before they took that little sliver out are unbuiltable as R2? Did you say that?
Yes, sir. That's actually a pretty good mystery. I mean, I can't tell you what happened nearly 40 years ago when a house was built. I can't tell you why a permit was issued with a yard that was too short, based on zoning even at that time. But the way we apply zoning today, which is clearly the way it's written, you'd be required to have a 35-foot front yard and a 40-foot rear yard. And we're talking...
Could never have done that.
Could never have done it. You'd be hard-pressed to get a 20-foot rear yard on that lot.
Do you have a record of the building, the building origin?
Mr. Nelson, I don't. I could go back and look pretty closely, but those records are all paper and we haven't delved into it. And it's really, it's not a, any consequence. This, the reason this really is relevant now is the house that was here was destroyed in the, in the February 2008 tornado. And so, I believe that the builder was looking to acquire the lot, make it a little deeper, and possibly create two, and obviously create two lots out of it.
Mr. Duke, I have a question for you. What are you doing out of your office to make sure that this doesn't happen again and that the surrounding landowners be informed in the event that a replat come up again?
Yes, sir. Your regulations do not have any requirements for... Yes, sir, your regulations do not have any requirements for, for notice, and generally notice, you know, is a, is a costly, depending on the amount of notices to be provided, venture, we don't charge any fees for replats, we may need to start doing that, but regardless, we're sending notice by regular mail to all the adjacent property owners, immediate adjacent property owners for any replat. I have to agree with Mr. Nelson, I honestly have never seen anything of this nature in a replat since I've been, you know, employed here and certainly practicing as a, as a planner, so.
I think Mr. Nelson had me about, about a year, and I've never seen this happen either.
But hopefully we won't have, have it happen anymore, or we'll have something like a clue as to something that might be out there. There's certainly definite value in having comments from folks surrounding the property, and I think that the measures we've taken are sufficient.
Thank you. Mayor?
And to go back to, to your comment about sending notices out to the adjacent property owners, in a case like this, it would not be two people, two households, would it? It would be one, two, three, four, six, because you have people behind you, people beside you.
Actually, in this case, we would have gone to one, two, three, four, five, six, probably this, this corner right here where...
Even seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would have been sufficient notice, and neighbors are generally, as we find out with preliminary plats and rezonings, neighbors are generally pretty good about letting each other know, even those that don't get the notice.
Yes, sir, I agree, and as we see in the crowd that we have here, that word does get around, and I do appreciate them, all their due diligence in bringing this to us. I do see, I do see if Mr. Chambliss is in the audience, does, was he like to say anything?
Can I give him a different perspective?
Is that, is that, is that out of character for me?
You can't, you, no, not really.
Now, Joe's telling you like it is, but the Chambliss is owning the property, and when they purchased the property, there's a fence line there, and what this turned into many, many years ago was basically an adverse possession case. And when this property here comes along with a subdivide, this developer recognizes it as an adverse possession case, so he plants this property, just as you see, along that red line with this lot, 13, 14, and 15 are minus that piece of land. And at that point in time, this was never cleaned up, because these people here that lived here were actively in possession of this strip of land right here with a fence, fence has always been there. Now Chambliss, when, when they come across the property, that, they're purchasing the property, now, they don't know all the total history behind it, but there's a, there's a sequence of events where the purchasers of the property have purchased the entire property, and if I'm not mistaken, also picked up adverse possessed papers, but at the point when the Chambliss, Mr. Chambliss is involved in it, that piece is left out, buys a piece of land, gets a piece of land, he assumes that he owns it, but then, when you look at the paperwork and look at the actual survey, it, that, that's when the question comes up. This piece was actually purchased by the group that's basically in opposition to this after the fact, after this came about. I hate to see you come back in here and replat the property or undo something that's been done. I mean, there's, there's laws, there's adverse possession laws, there's a lot of things involved in here that might trump anything, anything that's been done after the fact, because the Chambliss has definitely had certain rights to the land, I don't know that they'll ever exercise those rights, I don't know if they want to, but adverse possession is a, a pretty strong animal out there, even though they haven't been there for a period of time, but then there's a period of transfer of this additional land along with it, which was missed in the last two cases or more. So, I just hate to see, cleaning it up, I don't know that you can clean it up. I mean, the issues here, and the issue for the, some of it's planted property that's put the slab down there is there, now, if you want to clean that issue up and pay him back for a slab, that might be a better idea, so everybody walks away clean. But just cleaning this part of it up, I don't know that it solves everybody's problems out here. And right now, it just sits there, so it's, it's strictly y'all's business how y'all handle it.
Mr. Hall?
Is there any recorded legal matters on this right, adverse possession? You just can't, or did y'all, they, they just assumed they owned it?
Mr. Goodman, please speak into mic.
I'm assuming, I mean, I hadn't seen all the documents, but this property, when it was planted, this portion of it was left out, and it was left to those people, and when I say left to them, there are some, there are some quitclaim deeds that takes this property and gives it to this group, but the property sold a few more times, and that portion of that transfer was left out, is my understanding.
Wasn't there a comment made that the other part of that, he got a deed, but he really didn't get one?
He has a deed and it's signed, but actually, it happened so many years before that the same person that signed the deed forgot that they had signed the deed to a previous group. I, I couldn't tell you how many years before, because I haven't seen all the documents.
Go show you, research, research.
Absolutely.
And I want to thank you folks for coming up here and bringing this to our attention, too. This, gentlemen, this is a no-brainer. I call for the question of all of this.
Not at this time, we may have some more questions, Mr. Hall.
Sure.
I think the mayor has his, uh, Mr. Mayor, you want to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right, you've heard the resolution to withdraw the commission approval for the overlooked estate for plat number 5A. All in favor of the, the withdrawal, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Madam Secretary, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Duke, you have anything else?
Yes, sir, I do not, I appreciate action on this, this matter, thank you.
Any commission have anything else to say? All right, meeting's adjourned.